Welcome to a meeting of the council of the Save Long Beach held Tuesday, December 17th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Whoever will call, Councilmember Bendo.
President.
Councilmember Lester.
Here.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Here.
Vice President Fiamara.
Yeah.
President Finn.
President.
Let the record indicate the Presidents, City Manager Dan Creighton and Corporation Counsel Frank Decranis will now have a salute to the flag.
Please place your hands over your heart. Gladelings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our December 17th City Council Meeting. The haberdashery was chosen by Roy, I have to say. Dan will give the City Managers' report.
All right, so I'll start with just apologizing to everyone. This will be a little bit of a lengthy report for this year. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. As this is the last City Council Meeting of the year, I thought it would be an opportune time to reflect on the administration's accomplishments after nearly a full year in office. Before launching into the presentation, there are just a few housekeeping issues of note. First, a big thank you to the city staff that worked on the Christmas tree lighting and the Electric Light Parade. Both events went off well without a hitch and were extremely well attended and enjoyed by the public. They were exciting and fun kickoffs to the holiday season, and I want to thank everybody for the great work that they did. The lighting of the menorah in Kennedy Plaza will take place each evening from December 25th through January 1st, with the Beaches Jewish Community Celebration of Hanukkah taking place at 6:00 PM on Thursday the 26th. This is a joyous event that the entire community is invited to, so we look forward to celebrating with everyone. In observance of Christmas, the Rec Center and ICE Arena will be closing at 4:00 PM on Tuesday the 24th. City Hall, the Magnolia and Rec Centers, along with the ICE Arena, will be all closed on Wednesday the 25th, Christmas Day. Buses will run on a holiday schedule. Citywide recycling will take place. Similarly, in observance of New Year's, the Rec Center and ICE Arena will be closing at 4:00 PM on Tuesday the 31st, and on Wednesday, January 1st, City Hall, the Magnolia Center and the Rec Center will be closed. Again, buses will run on the holiday schedule and citywide recycling will take place. With all that being said, I'm going to jump into the year in review. So, I've broken down the slides into a few categories, of which the first one will be financial. I think it's great to start with, we achieved a 0% tax increase, the first in a decade. It was quite, I believe it was quite an accomplishment. We're also able to increase our bond rating to A3, resulting in lower borrowing rates for the city. We enacted a tax exemption for Gold Star families, honoring those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms. Just so that everybody knows, this council, the five of them, are committed to making Long Beach more affordable for families and seniors by reducing costs, increasing and diversifying our revenues, holding the line on spending, and continuing to negotiate more favorable contracts for the city and its residents. I'd like to thank every department in the city for doing a great job in getting us there, and especially the Comptroller and Legal Offices for their hard work this year. As far as -- As far as public safety, Long Beach is a safe community, and our team is committed to keeping that way. This past summer, we shut down an unauthorized gathering on our beaches and held organizers responsible for the costs, putting new strict policies in place to prevent beach party takeovers in the future. We increased police patrols on the boardwalk and approved the newly established narcotics unit. The Long Beach Police Department hired four new sworn police officers. Don't worry, it replaced mostly retiring officers, only one of them was new. And expanded high-tech crime fighting tools across the city, including body cameras, a TASER program, drone operations, and extension of license plate reader programs. A total of approximately $900,000 in grants made these several programs possible. Our Fire Department has welcomed 15 new firefighters, seven career, and eight volunteers. Firefighter overtime was reduced by 74%. We replaced aging equipment, most notably a new ladder truck, to keep our many high-rise residents safe, and a water rescue pickup truck. Thank you to both our police and firefighters for everything you do. You keep us safe and put your lives on the line while we are all able to sleep at night. Thank you. So as far as infrastructure, this is going to be a long one, just so that everybody's prepared for that. The city is making steady progress on several important projects, including the North Shore Critical Infrastructure Project. This vital upgrade protects our bayfront and utility facilities, prevents severe age-old flooding, and keeps our residents and properties in the city, especially the North Park area, safer. Work progresses on the Long Beach Sewer Consolidation Project, which will divert sewage off the barrier island, resulting in a cleaner and more pristine bay for our future generations. These two projects are transformative and will result in cleaner and a more resilient bayfront for our community. In our business district, we are proud of newly paved roads, new sidewalks with decorative brick pavers, new bike racks, and upgraded decorative colonial light fixtures. This boost to local businesses in our city was funded in part by generous grants from our state partners. The Pacific Playground Makeover was also completed this year, and upgrades for Sherman Brown Park are underway. We are in the first phase of replacement of our water mains and water service throughout the walks. City residential water meter replacements are beginning in 2025, the contracts already awarded, and we have continued to install new tide flex valves around the city to mitigate, to continue to mitigate flooding on our streets. In 2024, there have been 38 capital projects totaling over $200 million of investments in Long Beach infrastructure. To continue, the city repaved six miles of roadway, 11% of our total roadways, including the complete reconstruction of the 200 block of East Market Street and the 100 block of East Park Avenue. Work continues on the complete reconstruction of Heron Street north of Pine, mitigating flooding for those residents. Nobody in the city likes potholes. That's why we fixed more than 1,500 of them citywide in 2024. I'm not happy with that. I think there's still a lot more to go, because as we see, the city has a lot of potholes, and we're continuing to take an aggressive approach to fixing them throughout the city. Train commuters also saw upgrades to the Long Island Railroad parking garage, including a new paint job, upgraded and efficient meters, and increased power washing and police patrols. The city continues to advocate with the Long Island Railroad and MTA to improve the conditions at their station. A parking committee was created to help study and come up with innovative solutions for our parking challenges. Let's move over to the rec. At the ICE Arena rink, there was a beautiful, full arena fresh coat of paint, the first since the arena was built in 1973. A new roof was also installed. The men's bathroom was recently completed, and the women's bathroom will start at the end of the hockey season in 2025. New safety netting now protects fans and spectators, and a new Zamboni will keep our ice looking great. A pro shop and concession stand is returned to our ICE Arena, the first in several years. Finally, at the Rec Center Gym, new state-of-the-art weights and cardio equipment are coming soon, along with upgrades to our sporting facilities. Our senior programs have been expanded and pickleball courts have been enhanced. So moving on to grants, the city was awarded more than $4.5 million in new grant funding in addition to current grant funding. There has been a 50% increase in applications from the prior year, from 20 to 30, and the city currently manages almost $222 million in active grant funding that is spread across 47 ongoing city projects. Community Development Block grant funding has increased 82% in the annual allocation of funds from Nassau County compared to the prior year, and we were awarded an additional $300,000 because of the good stewardship by the city. Funds are used to upgrade parks, playgrounds, and community centers, as well as provide youth and senior programming for low- and moderate-income individuals. The city was also awarded almost $3.5 million for downtown Park Avenue projects, including Kennedy Plaza. And if I could just go backwards, I'd like to thank DPW, our Grants Group, and everybody in the city that has helped with all of these items, especially even the Fire and Police Department to help with the grants on a significant basis, and everybody's done a great job in increasing the funding coming to the city. So thank you for that. [applause] So, there's still a few more to go. As far as quality of life accomplishments, a newly established planning board will be an important advancement for the city of Long Beach. You'll see two items on the agenda for tonight for publication that will be helping to set up that planning board. Planning Board will help keep the city, help the city avoid the overdevelopment mistakes of the past and ensure projects fit the character of the city and have a positive impact on the community. The City Council also enacted a moratorium on subdivisions until such time as the planning board is implemented. Council helped defeat Equinor's attempt to run high-voltage cables through our community and will continue to fight against offshore wind. This year, the city of Long Beach presented or partnered an endless sea of events throughout the city. From my favorite local musicians playing concerts on the beach and in Kennedy Plaza to our beloved Movies on the Beach series, Fall Festival, running races, Christmas tree and menorah lightings, Electric Light Parade, fireworks, and so much more. A robust sponsorship program expanded in 2024 helps to offset the cost of all these events to the residents, so that the impact on us is much less. Our boardwalk and beach park is second to none, and new improvements to beach park are actively being developed. In 2024, we approved new agreements with Arts in the Plaza and the Farmers Market to continue these Long Beach events, bringing fresh locally sourced products, produce, and local artists to the plaza each week. The council brought back the much-loved tradition of the arts, the Boardwalk Arts and Crafts Festival, returning for the first time in several years. New beach ticket booths for summer of 2025 are in the works. The city plans to strategically relocate those booths for the summer, a move that we expect will enhance the beauty of our booths and reduce unauthorized unpaid entry to our beaches. We expect this will result in significant revenue increases for beach park. Again, I'd like to thank everybody that's been involved in each of these. Beach Park, our Grants Team, Stacy, who's got a lot of donations for the city. It's been really a top, top group of people. The Planning Board, whereas we give the Planning Department a lot of credit, they've done a great job, but there's so many more people involved. We have our Buildings Department involved, we have our Personnel People involved, we have Robin from our Zoning Board, our Zoning Board Group, Building Department. Everybody legal, it's really a significant amount of work that has went into this. It's a little further behind than I would have liked, I would have liked it to have been implemented already, but it has to be done right so that the city doesn't see any legal impacts from it over time. So thank you to everybody involved in that. [applause] Only a few more slides to go, everybody, sorry. So we're pleased with the progress we made in 2024, but I don't want anybody to think we have any intentions on resting on our laurels for the year ahead. Through a state grant, as mentioned earlier, we'll be making dramatic improvements to Kennedy Plaza and our Central Business District. We'll be undertaking holistic and comprehensive studies of both traffic and parking throughout the city. They will offer ways to improve these persistent decades-old challenges. 100 trees will be planted in the spring, based on a grant that we received that will improve drainage, air quality, and the aesthetics of our city. Our Department of Public Works continues to remain busy to complete full reconstruction of Heron Street, reconstruction of Sherman Brown Park, a complete overhaul of Sherman Brown Park, so everybody knows it will be pretty significant, complete the Critical Infrastructure Project on the north side and the Walks Projects. We'll continue with sewer reconsolidation, replacing old 8,000 residential water meters with smart meters, and repave more roads throughout the city and continue fixing potholes. We're also going to keep investing in our recreation complex by purchasing a significant amount of new cardio and strength equipment for the recreation center and upgrading the turf fields and basketball courts. So that being said, these are just, you know, it sounds like a bit, but it's only a few of the highlights. There's a lot more work that has happened in the city. These are some of the ones I thought I wanted to point out as significant impacts to the city, and the team in the city has really done an amazing job accomplishing what we intended to do and continuing to make those adjustments in the future and continue to make the city a better place to live for all of us. I want to thank the council for its leadership, our dedicated workforce for its hard work and service to our residents, and putting their trust in us to get the job done. It's been an honor, privilege, and challenge, and quite a joy to serve the city, I call home, and as City Manager for the past year. I wish you all a happy and healthy holiday season. I look forward to a great 2025. Thank you very much, and with that, I'll conclude my City Manager Report. Thank you. [applause]
Thank you very much, Dan. I think it should be evident to everybody here in the audience and watching on YouTube that we have an excellent, dedicated, trustworthy, ethical, and highly motivated City Manager. I can't be happier for what he's done. He's the first guy in the office and the last guy out. He puts in an amazing amount. Whenever we call him up, he gets right on it. I think the city should be very grateful to have a guy like Dan Creighton working for him. I know I am. Thank you, Dan.
Brendan, the Legos? The Legos?
Oh, yes. Right, so one more announcement. If you notice downstairs, there's a box by the entrance as you walk through for donation of Legos. So, a Long Beach High School girl, Reese Gallinaro, decided to collect Legos. They have to be new in the box, though, because they're for cancer patients at the Sloan-Kettering Hospital, and she thought it would be really great for the kids who are hospitalized there and under the doctor's care to get these donated Legos, take their minds off their troubles, give them something to do while they're sitting around. So if you have any Legos and you want to contribute, there's a box downstairs. There's also a QR code on the box that enables the Legos to be shipped directly to the Gallinarrows without giving up their address to everybody. So check it out, and there'll be something on Instagram, Stacy Sweet, who does a great job as well. Thank you, Stacy. We'll have something on Instagram as well about these Legos. So thank you to the Gallinarrows for doing this, yes. [applause] Thanks, John. Okay, on with the meeting.
Okay.
Can't wait.
The first item this evening is a public hearing for an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the Save Long Beach Regarding Administration.
Okay, so this item is tied to the changes that were made at the last meeting with regards to the Code of Ordinances and City Council meetings. Good and Welfare, since it's not part of the officially, part of the official City Council meeting, was separated out and put in its own section. This resolves that issue, and if you have any further questions, either myself or Dave Fraser will be able to answer.
Okay, we have comments from the council and questions?
Yeah, how do you do this on? Thank you, this is both Dave and Dan that did this. This is the first time that Good and Welfare is now a mandatory part of the meeting, and I think that's very important, especially for this community. I think people should have a right to speak and should, you know, they've gotten used to it, and now it's actually codified so that we know we have it in there. So thanks a lot, guys.
Comments from the public? Okay, we'll close that one then.
Onto the regular calendar. Item 5 has been taken off the calendar. Okay, onto the regular calendar. Item 1 is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the Save Long Beach Regarding Administration. A hearing has been held on this item already. Item 2 is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to accept a grant for the Fire Department.
Okay, so this item allows us to accept a $600,000 grant from Nassau County to fund a new ambulance and associated medical equipment. There's no local match for this grant, and the grant allows for half of the money to be received upfront, with the other half upon meeting certain requirements. If you have any further questions, I should be able to answer it. Joe Miller is here as well to answer any questions you may have.
Comments from the council?
Just a comment. I'm thankful for everyone that applied for these grants, and this is a wonderful grant, as Dan mentioned, where it's not match. We actually get the monies upfront, half the money upfront, and whenever we can supply our Fire Department with new equipment to keep our community safe, I think it's a wonderful thing, especially through a grant. So this is great.
John?
The agreement says that all the funds have to be obligated by December 31 of this year of '24 and expended by December 31 of '26. I know we're voting to buy some equipment that's going to spend some of this money. No? The equipment, the power lifts are not being paid for by this equipment?
No, that's being paid for under the capital projects for this year.
Okay, so it's not going to come out? All right. So then, are we going to be able to get, like, the new ambulance and stuff by December 31 to '26?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll be able to expend the funds before they need to be?
Absolutely.
How do they define, so obligated by the end of this month? How do they define obligated? Just by saying we're going to spend it on equipment? Is that good enough?
Ina Resting, City Comptroller. So this is ARPA money that I left from COVID. The way that it's defined is it's a pass-through from the county, so for them, it has to be in contract by December 31, 2024, and for us, as the receiver, will have to have it spent by the December 31, 2026.
Okay, so obligated is the agreement between us and the county, then?
On the county part, yes. Their deadline is December 31, 2024. Obligated means they had to have a mutually signed contract. For us, we have through December 31.
So it's the agreement between us and the county that obligates the funds?
On the county side, yes.
Okay, but, all right, so it doesn't put us in jeopardy in any way, though?
We have December 31, 2026 deadline.
So we're 20, okay, that's all I need. Thank you.
Chris, do you have a comment?
I'm good.
Okay.
One comment I will make is that Pat, our county legislator, Pat Mulaney, was also very helpful in procuring this grant, and we're thankful to him. I think we have a very good and diligent legislator looking out for us here in Long Beach and the barrier island. Any comments from the public?
Yes. James Hodge, 95 East Fulton Street, here in our great city. Just wanted to always thank our volunteer and paid Fire Department and all of our emergency services, whether it's the Police Department and auxiliaries, but I'd like to thank those that wrote the grants, and I think it should always be mentioned, those that are writing the grants, because it's a lot to do the paperwork and do all of the different things that a grant requires. So I know a lot of the people that are writing the grants now were actually here prior to you guys getting in. I'm just grateful that, like you said, more grants are being written, but it's great. It's great that more grants, and also the legislator, because I think there's hundreds of millions of ARPA funds that are available, so if we got $600,000, let's try to get more than that, because there's hundreds of millions that are available, and anything that we can do, I think the ladder is down in the Fire Department also. So if we can get that fixed, any piece of equipment that we can get fixed or new for the Fire Department, let's do all we can, because as I always say, I'm so grateful for those heroes that run in when so many people are running out. So again, I just stand up and say thank you to whoever, Pat, and all of those that had to do whatever work to get this grant. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Sam Pinto, Long Beach Professional Firefighters. How are you? I just want to say thank you to Nassau County, legislator Mulaney, and the city administration for processing and receiving this grant funding for important equipment. Our ambulance is run very often, very busy. New equipment's important. Funding for equipment is very important. I appreciate everyone's effort on working on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, thank you. We'll close that one then. Dave?
Item 3 is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to purchase two power-load stretchers, four stair chairs, and warranty and maintenance plans under SAVIC Buying Group.
So as mentioned, this item allows us to purchase two power-load stretchers and four stair chairs for use by the Fire Department. These will be purchased through the SAVIC Buying Group and come with warranty and maintenance plans. If you need any details on that, Joe Miller is here for any questions.
Roy?
Joe, I'm just trying to figure it out, because the invoices have two different prices for the Stair Pro Model 6252. That's the stair chairs, the ones for the tight areas?
Which one are you reading off of, so I can make sure I'm reading the same one?
Okay, there's, it's striker, there are two strikers.
Page 2?
There's, I, no, no, page 1.
Page 1, okay.
Yeah.
We are getting two power-load stretchers and four stair chairs.
So is the Stair Pro a stair chair? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yes.
Okay, so the Stair Pro Model 6252, that's a, you know, I used to --
That's the stair chair, yes.
When I was in the city, we had those.
Yep.
And it's no power or anything.
Correct.
Yeah, and on page 2.
What?
Go away. And then you have, on the next page, page 2, the same, it looks like the same stair chair, and that's, on one page, it's $4,416 a chair, and on the other page, it's $805 a chair. I'm just trying to figure out, first stair chair, I know $4,000's a lot, $800, I can understand.
Joe, is that the warranty?
Yes, well, one of them is going to be the price for itself, the other is the warranty.
The warranty for a stair chair is?
For all of them, for warranty and maintenance for the --
But this is a stair chair. This is something that just falls, right?
These are not the same ones that you used 30 years ago. These are a lot more complex, also made a lot better than they were then.
So they're $4,400 each, and the warranty is $805?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Oh, John?
So the grant we just voted on, the $600,000, $350,000 was to replace ambulance 2321, and then $250,000 was to replace equipment. So I guess this is a follow-up from what I asked last one. Then why is it, why can't we use that 250 for these purchases?
We had allocated the $200,000 under the capital for specifically stretchers.
Right.
So that's why we were doing this on that, to get them now. At the time when we did it, we had no idea we'd be getting the grant, so we had put everything into motion to do it that way. With the grant, it allows us to get additional equipment on top of these.
So we'll still need more?
Absolutely.
Stuff, I guess, is the generic term?
Always need a lot more.
Okay, so we're purchasing two power-load stretchers, and I think we bought one a few months back also, if I recall correctly.
When we had the new ambulance delivered, that came with a power-load stretcher.
So how many power-load stretchers are that going to give us? Three?
We'll have three in service with the purchase of these two.
All right, so one ambulance won't have one, then?
Correct.
Okay. Is, at some point, will we probably get one for that fourth ambulance, or we don't get to that fourth ambulance using it too often?
No, if we are able to do it with the grant money coming in, then yes, we'd be able to do a fourth one.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, comments, questions from the public? All right, we'll close that one then.
Item 4 is a resolution authorizing transfer funds for the 24-25 fiscal year.
Okay, so we've had this one a couple of times in the past, and it seems like the requests are increasing a good bit. This allows us to pay out vacation as per CSEA Contract Section 8-1.3. Several requests have been made that reduce our long-term liability, because we have to pay out vacation when people leave. We have sufficient funds available in the identified lines to cover this increased cost, and if you have any further questions, I could try to answer it, or if it's -- Or if it's financial, maybe Ina could help as well.
Just a quick one, I'm sorry, you might have just said it. Is this their cashing out some of that time or are they separated?
It's, no, this is cashing out.
They're cashing out some of their accumulated time? Okay.
Comment from the public? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item 5 has been taken off calendar. Item 6 is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2425 fiscal year.
Okay, so this item is to fund a projected deficit in the budget for overtime in a central garage. When doing the budget, we reduce the overtime by 44%. The central garage responds to breakdowns of buses, ambulance, fire trucks, beach maintenance equipment, et cetera, that obstruct traffic or require immediately immediate repair that cannot wait until the next day. We do not foresee the level of overtime required to respond to these emergency calls. And therefore, I am requesting an increase in this line to reach the projected level that we see. I believe we have the money in both fuel savings and equipment lines. The overall budget will stay neutral. And this line will still be 23% less than last year's budget. I will continue to aggressively monitor the overtime usage to prevent this from becoming a problem again. I will say, I still think we have a significant savings, but I did not foresee the amount of breakdowns and stuff when I was doing the budget.
Okay. I have a question first. Is the director here?
No. The Mike, Mike was out sick today, so he wasn't able to make it tonight.
Oh, too bad. I hope he feels better. You have a question?
Well, just, so you're saying it's just unforeseen issues leading to more overtime? Can you just?
Yeah, I think, I think when we're doing the budget, I think the central garage staff saw the need. I was being pretty aggressive in the budget. I didn't see the need. I didn't look at it as closely as I think I should have. I reduced them significantly on the overtime budget. I did reduce it 44%. I see the errors in my ways in some respects. I do think we'll still, with this increase, will still be a reduction from last year of 23%. And I do think it should be sufficient. But we, I underestimated, I didn't actually look at the breakdowns of equipment as a need for overtime, but it clearly is.
Thank you. John?
And I think you kind of covered it. A budget is a best guess at what we think we're going to take in or spend. So these things do happen. And I guess, so four and a half months in, they're already at 108% of their overtime budget for the year. What's that?
Five and a half months.
No, four.
Five and a half.
July, August, September, October, and, no, as of November 20th. So four and a half months into the fiscal year, they're at 108%. July, August?
So it goes from July 1st through?
I think you're going to right now and he's going to November 20th.
You're going to now. I'm going to the date of the last overtime report.
Yeah.
So.
We projected this based on where the numbers are now.
Right. So do you think the 25 will hold for the rest of the year? Or is this just wishful thinking at this point?
I believe it will. All discretionary overtime at this point will be stopped in this department. Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? Comments from the public, questions? All right, thank you.
Item 7 is also a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2425 fiscal year.
Okay, so this item is to cover purchases of salt for the winter season. Unfortunately, this purchase is usually done prior to June 30th under the previous budget, whereas it resulted in savings in the last year's budget. Unfortunately, we had a minimum purchase agreement with the company that typically, that we buy the salt from. We did not use that last year. We had a very mild winter. And the bill came in after we closed the books for last year. So in addition to buying the salt for this year, we have to pay the minimum purchase agreement that was, that we were contracted with for last year. So we did not have that in the budget. We probably should have asked for a bill come June 30th to make sure we had it included in last year's budget. But we did not get it until after the fact. And we need to fund that now because it is contractual obligation. I do think that if we have a similar season to what we've had the last few years, where it's only as good as the crystal ball that we have in front of us at the time, we should have adequate funds in this, what's that?
The almanac?
The almanac, yes. We should have adequate funds in the stolen removal overtime line. We have underspent that for the last few years. We did fatten it up based on historical data. I do think we still have some fluff in there. And the winters have been milder over time. So that being said, I am here to answer any questions. I have Ina here as well and Russell, who may be able to answer any further questions you may have.
I'll just start with a question I asked Dan privately, but I think it's a question a lot of people here would have. Is it, first of all, how do they project it? And was this a normal type of projection?
So I believe our projection for this year is still in line. I'll have Russell come up and answer more. I think the bigger problem on this one is that we had a obligation that we did not move forward from last year. We projected a pretty sizable load last year. We had 1,500 tons, I believe, contracted for last year. And the way the contract reads is we have to take delivery of at least half of it. So I think we were obligated to accept 750 tons last year, of which we did not use. So they billed us for the difference that we did not receive because of the contractual obligation. So you know, we did see this reduction based on the last few years' usage. We did reduce the order to a maximum of 1,000 tons this year, of which we're obligated to pick up at least 500 tons. I don't know, Russell, you have more that you could add to that?
That's correct. You explained it exactly the way I would have explained it also.
Yeah, that was my question.
Yeah, I guess the only question, so again, in budgeting, this is all best guess and we don't know what the weather is going to be. To your point, last year, we spent very little on overtime and salt and stuff because it was a light winter. But then the 2021 winter, we spent like over a quarter of a million dollars just on overtime. So I guess the question, and we don't know what's going to happen this winter, obviously. But since we're taking $60,000 out of the overtime line, if we should have a heavy snow season, do you have other places you'll think you'll be able to cover that overtime from if we have to, if we exceed the budget?
It's an excellent question. If we have a brutal summer, again, it's, I mean, a brutal winter. Hopefully, we don't have a brutal summer with snow, I hope. But if we have a brutal winter, we will, we will end up short in snow removal.
You'll find it somewhere.
We'll have to find it. And, you know, hopefully, the snow hits us during the daytime when people are in regular hours.
You know that never happens.
No, it never happens. But yeah, we did, just so that everybody is aware, we did look at the numbers from the last few years. And we did project it at the higher point of the last few years, even though we've been underspending it. So we do believe we have a significant amount here. If we hit a really bad winter, I guess all bets are off if we have snow.
That's the problem. We have no way of knowing what Mother Nature is going to do.
Yep, thank you.
It starts at four days, right? Any other questions? Questions for the public, comments? Craig? I know you want a snowy winter, but not here.
Craig Folley to Long Beach.
Thank you.
What does 750 tons of salt cost?
Russell, you have those numbers. I could get you the numbers.
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
Ina, Ina's always prepared.
Well, the resolutions for 66,000, and it's roughly, I believe it's a little, this is, the 66 covers this year's salt, a portion of it, and then, and then last year's salt that we had to pay for.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Craig.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Russell.
Okay. Item A is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a local law amending the charter of the state of Long Beach regarding the planning board. This item is for public here, publication only. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 21st at 7:00 PM. Item 9 is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the state of Long Beach regarding planning and zoning generally. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 21st at 7:00 PM. Let me clarify, this is a, an extended period of time because of the average, because it is a zoning item. So it requires an extra week of advertising for the hearing. Okay, on to the voting. So item 1 is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding administration. Who would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
Second. Who got that?
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
Item 2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a grant for the fire department. Who would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
I'll second it.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
Item 3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase two power load stretchers, four stair chairs and warranty and maintenance plans under SAVIC buying group. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
I guess I'm a little bothered by this. I love the idea that they're getting the power stretches. Having worked on an ambulance, I know how difficult it can be. And the problem is this money is coming out of our pockets. It's not a grant. And when I look at, I was asking about the stair chair, the striker model 6252, which we're paying $4,400 a piece for and $805 for the warranty. And you go online and it's much, much, much cheaper. So from medical supply places. So I'm just going to abstain on this particular vote because would not want to vote no. But on the other hand, I worry about the money.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. But the SAVIC buying group, you know, for municipalities, I, that's how much they're going to cost. I think it's necessary, yes.
Vice President Fiamara.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
Item 4 is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2425 fiscal year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
Item 6 is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2425 fiscal year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will. Second.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Again, this is an item I'm kind of concerned about. We're at 105%, like John said, four and a half months in of the overtime. And I don't see how 25,000 is going to cover us for the rest of the year. But I'm trusting Dan on this. So I will vote yes, but I will express my concern.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
Item 7 is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2425 fiscal year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
Item 8 is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of a local law amending the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding the planning board. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
Second.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
And finally, item 9 is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the state of Long Beach regarding planning and zoning generally. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
Second.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
City manager's multi-personnel report has been filed by the city clerk. Will you make a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
I'll second it.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
James Hodge?
James Hodge, 95 East Fulton Street, Long Beach, New York. Take a moment of silence for the students and the teacher, lives that was taken tragically. Again, send prayers and condolences out to their family. So I stand here today on the last day of this city council meeting of the year. See a lot of festive colors, see a lot of excitement. And I'm a little saddened because I know this administration has been to, and I'm not on the board and I don't speak for the board. I speak as a resident and as a former member of the MLK Board. I see a lot of times the city council was there and smiling and in different pictures and said that we'll take this MLK out of eviction court. I know you've settled cases throughout the city. And this is not even a case about money. It's not a case that the MLK owe a dime. Yet you keep hearing over and over that you're working on it. Can I ask you, President or City Manager, what is the situation with taking the MLK out of eviction court?
So we've been working with the MLK Center to come up with an agreement for quite a while. There is one sticking point that remains. We've let them know what our position is on that. And they are, I think, in the final portions of agreeing to that. I'm not sure. It's really for, you know, we'd have to ask the board on what, what the issue is with the sticking point. But we're, we've been negotiating with them for a while. And, you know, there's an open issue that we have to.
Okay, so it's costing a small organization that don't have a lot of money, a lot of money to keep attorneys. And if you guys are working with them, you can still take them out of eviction court. So it's not costing the taxpayers and it's not costing the small organization. If it's something that you guys are just trying to pressure them in, they've been there since 1981. The organization started in 1968. It's an organization that has helped thousands and hundreds of thousands. If we go by how many people has, it has helped outside of even this barrier island and the city of Long Beach itself. And so I ask to you, you know, let's don't come and say nice words. Don't come and just give toys out and yet have that place, which cares about the most neediest people throughout our whole city and it cares for our whole city. You can give a toy and at the same time, keep stabbing them in the back. And I say that because it was a lot of promises said. There's a lot of smiles that was given and yet they're still in eviction court. Why don't you be Santa Claus and not the Grinch and take them out of eviction court? I know Martin Luther King Day is coming up and there'll be a lot of great speeches. I remember I had a dream and all of these things that you guys will say because you'll get a chance to speak. And I know, President, you said, we know how great the city manager is doing if we look at our social media, but it's rarely ever him getting any credit for doing any of the work. It's always maybe you or the city council. But our city manager do do a lot of work. And so I ask the city manager and I ask the city council, for some of the lowest income individuals and for some of the money that you get on the backs of those low to moderate income families, you get hundreds of thousands of dollars. I finish my time with saying, you get hundreds of thousands of dollars for that area and for that MLK center. And you don't pay taxes for that property. for that MLK Center, and you don't pay taxes for that property. You get money from Stop &amp; Shop, over $100,000, and so many other grants. How is the MLK still in eviction court? I ask you, on this holiday season, please take the MLK out of eviction court. One of the founders just died in his service. We had a memorial the other day, Sonny McKeeva. So, I speak on behalf of all of the ancestors and all of those that fought so hard to establish an organization to care for those in the city of Long Beach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike Delory.
Good evening, members of the city council. I like your outfits. Anyway, thank you for getting, I will not be here for the January 21 public hearing for the planning board, but I just want to read this. "Thank you for getting this legislation establishing the planning board on the council agenda. This was not an easy task, but as you mentioned to me in the springtime, your goal was to get this done, and you did. It's extremely important for future and proper developments within the city of Long Beach to have a planning board. Additionally, I would like to thank the prior council members who worked to establish and adopt a comprehensive plan. That plan recommended the need and creation of a planning board. Speaking for the West Home &amp; Walks Group, there are properties which the future planning board should look at, which is Grand Boulevard and West Broadway on the boardwalk, the former Hebrew Academy property on West Broadway and the boardwalk at Washington Boulevard, the building on the northeast corner of Washington Boulevard and West Broadway, the Temple property at Lindell Boulevard and West Walnut, the former Dairy Barn property at Lafayette Boulevard and West Park Avenue on the north side of Park Avenue. As you can see, in our civic area boundaries, these are sites which have expressed or have plans to develop or expand. These possible developments have impacts to traffic and place demands on the water and sewer infrastructure, which we all know is old and would not be able to properly handle the new demands. Dan, I know that your background experience played a big part in getting this done, and Brendan, as well as for the other council members, I want to thank you, since I won't be able to attend the hearing on January 21st. I appreciate all your hard work and looking forward to another Happy New Year. Thank you."
Thanks for your input, Mike. It, you know, means a lot, and obviously, you've got a lot of knowledge of the area, so we appreciate it, and, you know, you have input whenever you need it, as does anybody, you know, here. But Dan has worked very hard, and so, you know, Scott Kevins and Patty Born and the legal staff, Joe Lupo and Frank, so it's a real team effort. I'm probably leaving somebody out, but...
Robin?
Oh, Robin, yes, of course. Robin, how could I forget? Because she's integral to it with the zoning board. So, I mean, hopefully, we are really going to do good things with this. Thanks.
And I just want to add, I knew putting this legislation together was no easy task. I know you had outside consultants helping. I know, Dan, I read the article in the Herald, and I know that mentioning not having, I'll call, a planning board, I'll call it a semi-professional planning board, because they're basically all volunteers and assisting with city staff. But I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Joanne Crop?
Excuse my delay in getting back here to find out if there's been any updates on the last time I was here.
You might want to speak a little bit more into the microphone.
Excuse me?
Just bring that mic down a little bit to your mouth.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you fine, but the other people can't.
Okay. I wanted to find out if there was any updates, Mr. Bendow, on the airplane noise.
On the what?
Aeroplanes. Remember when I came, I'm delayed in getting back here.
Actually, I guess would be a question for our city manager and corp counsel. That was the question about the airplane noise?
Right, airplane noise.
Might we consider joining the town of Hempstead and North Hempstead suit against the FAA?
We have not yet. We will do that. I actually should put in a call to FAA directly, too. I have not. Frank, I don't know if we have in legal at all, but I don't believe we have. Frank?
Frank, do we get, have we made any inquiries to join the town of Hempstead?
Yeah, you know, Steve might have, but I don't know what his [inaudible].
I'll get your information, I'll get back to you, because I think what Frank was just saying is, we believe Steve, Stephen from our legal office did reach out. We'll check with him and get back to you on that.
So, you'll get back to me when I come to a next meeting?
No, I could take your number and I could have someone call you.
Okay, because it's on the slip.
We have the information on the slip.
All right. Okay, so you will let me know.
Yep.
I'm just curious, because it hasn't changed a bit since the last time I was here. All right, thank you, guys. Have a good holiday.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, even, just so you know, if we, even if we join the suit...
They come right over my house, too. It is, it's pretty awful.
Yeah, even if we join the suit.
Especially 4:30 AM, right?
Yeah, and something has to be done.
Right.
Okay, thanks, guys.
All right, thank you. Joseph Miller?
I have to mention, Anthony.
Anthony Mayello?
Anthony Mayello, Long Beach.
Hi, Anthony.
I just want to take a moment to thank the city council for the gratitude and hard work and dedication you guys have shown throughout this year. Your commitment to our community and the promises you have fulfilled for the fire department have not gone unnoticed. As a member of the volunteer fire department EMS branch, I've witnessed firsthand the positive impact of your support. Your efforts have strengthened our ability to serve and protect our community. For that, I am truly thankful. I just wanted to say that there were promises made from previous administrations that were never kept, and it's sort of disheartened a lot of the fire department members. And for that, a lot of the spirit has gone out of the fire department, right? So, I just wanted to thank you guys, especially tonight, for the effort that you guys have shown to try to improve the equipment we have. That in itself instills a lot of trust from the fire department, for the city council, because it was truly an effort to try to get out every night, to try to serve the citizens of our city with the equipment that we have. It's difficult to do the work that we do when you have equipment that's really falling apart. And it's refreshing, it's really, really a true sense of understanding the work that we do and the necessity of how we truly need the equipment that we've asked for continuously. So, I just wanted to take this moment to thank you guys for understanding, for listening, and for approving the equipment that you guys did for tonight. That's going to be very well welcomed. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony, and thank you to all the volunteers and the paid firemen, firefighters who work so hard for the city. You know, we're very thankful to have such a great fire department, so thank you very much. Is Joe back yet? No? Okay. Shuffle him to the bottom of the deck. Karen Ryskin?
I'm here, I'm Karen Ryskin, and I'm here on behalf of questions I have on the sewers and changes. I'm just wondering, I noticed, I'm in the canals, and I see that there are cylinders that they're lining up, getting ready to do something over by...
Heron.
Heron and Pine. And I'm at the other end, by the canal. My question is this, how long does the work take, and how much of an inconvenience is it going to be? Although, I know it's necessary, but just trying to get a handle on what to expect. There's a lot of people on our block.
Yeah, good question.
And they also marked up my lawn, other people's lawns occasionally, but I have a lot of markings on my lawn. I'd like to know what they're going to do.
Okay. All right, we have Russell.
Sure, so this is, this project is a full reconstruction of Heron from Pine to the bulkhead, no, to the channel. And the project includes new roads, new sewer, new water main, and also repairs to the existing bulkhead. We're raising the road, so it'll improve the drainage over there, and any of the markings, any dam, anything that the contractor marks up will be repaired in kind, so not to worry about that. And then, as far as the project schedule, it's estimated to be completed around this spring, in April.
So, we'll have to live with that for several months?
Yes, unfortunately, construction is inconvenient, but at the end, it'll be a nice product. There'll be new street lighting, new street trees, so it'll be a real improvement to the block.
Well, also, in, by the head of the canals, I had mentioned on several times back, that there's a huge hole that's sort of covered, but right, it has a cone on it. Somebody's going to get hurt on it. Somebody's going to land it and get their foot inside.
This is in the roadway, or...
No, this is at the head of the canal. It's on the grass area. Pardon me?
Chester.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, this is not on Heron?
No.
Okay, yeah, if you could read...
That's dangerous.
Yeah, we could take a look into it. We'll send our highway department over there.
Pardon me?
We'll send our highway department over there, and they can, they'll take a look at it.
That would be great, because we have a lot of little kids running around now. It would be a shame if somebody got hurt.
Of course, yeah. You can call DVW anytime if you notice anything that's unsafe. We'll go out there and take a look.
So, are we going to be able to park on our block during all this?
On, Heron is the only street that's being, is under construction currently, so Chester is not affected.
Then why is my whole, why is my whole block marked up?
This is Heron, or?
East Chester.
East Chester, we don't have any projects planned for East Chester.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, thank you, Karen. Thank you, Russell. Sam Pinto?
Good evening, Sam Pinto, Long Beach firefighters. I just want to take a moment to, on behalf of the membership, thank the current city administration, city manager, deputy city manager, city council, corporation council, and city clerk, Dave, thank you, for all your hard work. We're looking forward to a good holiday season, a good New Year, and we're hopeful for a fruitful and more productive 2025. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sam. Same. Same to you and the fire department. Thank you. Janet Cohen?
I just have a question on the, when we had the issue with the water pressure in November, is that all resolved? Is everybody back to normal?
Yes.
Okay, because I've had some of my neighbors telling me it's not, so I just want to check, but it should be normal?
So, the reason for that drop in pressure was a water valve that failed in the closed position. We had to bypass that. We were able to do all that work under that timeframe while we had the interconnects between us and Lido and Atlantic Beach. All three of those valves were replaced and reopened, so we should have full pressure to the city. Russell, do you have anything to add to that?
Where do you, where are you located in Long Beach?
Shore Road, but somebody on East Chester was one that said they have low pressure.
Okay, yeah, so they should, the pressure should be back to normal in those areas. The areas that might be affected with low pressure currently would be the walks, because since we're doing water main improvements over there, or even, like I mentioned on Heron, but all the other areas should be back to normal.
Okay, thank you. Have a nice holiday.
Thank you. Yep. Greg Forley?
I would like to thank the city council. This year has been spectacular with regard to the meetings, as opposed to previous, the amount that you've done. Absolutely tremendous. Congratulations, as well as all the administrators that go along with that, the soldiers and everything else. There's a couple of things that I would like to bring to attention that are stuck in my craw right now. Last week, or two weeks ago, at the meeting, the first 40 minutes was discussed about people expressing themselves, getting their three minutes, being able to talk about things with the city council on an open scale. And I am 100% in agreement with that. I have no problem in the world with that. What I do have a problem with is, if we are talking about, or you are talking about a specific subject, whatever it may be, the auxiliary police building, I don't feel that somebody should come up here and start talking about beach maintenance, or somebody should start talking about the turf field, or somebody should start talking about the bars in the West End. I think that the council should keep on topic and keep that person that is standing right here, talking into the microphone, on topic. It's not an open forum to say whatever the hell you want to say. First thing. Secondly...
Well-taken.
Secondly, on that same first 40 minutes, you talked about how this meeting goes so long and the incredible amount of extra time. I sat here and I watched, I have nothing against James, a moment of silence. I don't think that that's proper.
Well, you were the one that said it.
Okay, so, I don't believe...
No, it's not.
I'm here. I don't think that everybody in the audience should be subjected to that. If, again, I respect the MLK Center, no problem with that, but again, let's stay on topic. Don't waste everybody's time.
Okay. Please, James, please, James. No, no, no.
Do I talk when he's talking?
James, you had your time to speak. No, this is not a debate. Please, please.
He's not going to talk about the MLK.
He's going to talk about whatever he wants to talk about.
I'm going to talk about whatever the hell I want to talk about.
James, James. You had your chance to speak, James. James, he can say whatever he wants.
What is doing right there? I can talk about whatever I want.
You spoke already.
Did he get his three minutes already?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I'm telling you, waste time on one of the places that take care of people that need help.
Whenever he's finished, I'll pick it back up. Hmm? Whenever he's finished.
Please continue.
On the same topic, I think, on the same topic, I think when you're bringing stuff like that up, it's creating a bigger divide in the city, as opposed to mending the city. I'm colorblind, I'm not talking black and white, but I think when you start doing that, it's extremely irritating. It's irritating to me that, that we are dividing the city with talk of racism and stuff like that. It's not necessary, it's going in the wrong direction to do that. One other thing. I could pass on that. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your...
Sorry for the outburst.
Thank you. So, two points of order on this is that... So two points of order on this is that, when a topic is brought up during a council meeting, the comments need to be narrowly addressed to that specific item on the agenda. That's, it's in the charter, it's in the charter amendments that we talked about. That's a given. In terms of good and welfare, you could speak about what you want to speak about at good and welfare, but when one person is speaking, that's the way it's supposed to be. It's not a rebuttal, it's not a debate, you have your opportunity to speak, and that's the way it's supposed to be. That's just a point of order. Ron Paginini?
Ron Paginini, Long Beach. Good evening, everybody. I said I'd be back at the end of the year, and it's about overtime. The massive overtime. The last few years are a massive overtime, 5 million plus and one just under 5 million, and it generally ballooned, started to balloon, if you look at the budgets, 2020 and '21, whatever. It got to the point where I wouldn't care about it, I don't care if it was 10 million, but the bottom line is, we were taxed to death since 2012. Taxed to death. Now, I care about it. And from what I'm seeing and I'm hearing, I hear everything, I see everything, just like you guys. Dan is doing a great job, he's trying like hell to do the right thing, and hopefully he will succeed, but, you know, we're going to know the overtime for the last six months coming up in January. We'll take it from there. You had a year to see where it's coming from, why, the cause, abuse, and, you know, I truly believe that we can cut it down to 2.5 million dollars. I truly believe that. Don't forget, I worked for the city for 30 years. I was up here since 2018. I'm getting tired. But the bottom line is, we got to straighten it out. You know, Mr. Bendo did do things that were good, I can't, you know, blast him for everything, but it's up to you guys now, who's in power, to take control of this overtime. And it's, like I said, we'll see what happens in January. I'll ask for the list, which is not secret. We'll take it from there. And basically, you know, if you take the 2.5 million dollars, if you keep us under the cap, this is what the people want, you know, the citizens, we're so taxed to death, they're leaving. You take the 2.5, if you get 2.5, okay, and you keep us under the cap, give us a 1%, forget about the zero, 1% will cover all the raises. The whole city gets a raise every year, you got to cover it. Otherwise, you're going to do like a Schneemann job, okay, with a contingency and this and that. What happened? He used the contingency. He used it to lower the taxes, and then all of a sudden, there's nothing in the general fund. That's exactly what happened. Exactly what happened. So we got to keep ahead of this. You take the 2.5 million dollars, I'm just saying, if you do it, even two, you pay down the Haberman, that's 10% every year for 25 years. Say it's 10% every year, right? If you knock it down 4%, it would be nice, wouldn't it? So everybody, you know, will pay 6%, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, that's where that money is, it's a pot of gold, and I truly believe, listen, I'll help you guys, I'll direct you, you know me, and I'm sure you can do it. If you can do that, a 1% raise, a tax raise, and you knock that down, and maybe a little contingency money, what is it up to now? 14 million, 13 million? Something like that, right? A little of that, you can do it. You can knock it down to five, and you can be heroes, and we can stay here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, and thanks for your interest, seriously, I mean that, well taken. Thank you. Joe Miller's back? Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy Hanuk-- oh, no, there's no more. Happy holidays, everyone, and thank you for coming out. Have a great, have a great holiday season and safe home. Thank you.